I call the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting of Tuesday, January 22, 2019. It's now 9:04. Please stand for the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. I'd like to welcome everyone today and hope everybody had a safe trip in. If we do, roll call please.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Present.
Ms. Brooks.
Here.
I don't think we have any hearings or appointments. We have some table business, I believe, that was going to be removed today.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the Delaware County Department Right-of-Way of Easement from the table. I'll second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. We have speaking on that behalf.
This is an easement approved by the Redevelopment Commission. It's basically just a name change for a sliver of ground that the county has. Before, it was Delaware County for the use and benefit of the Department of Redevelopment. It's changing over to just Delaware County, Indiana, that allows the county to be able to use it, and a little broader than having to jump through the hoops of going to Redevelopment Commission and coming back here at a repeat time, so.
I'll make a motion we approve the right-of-way easement.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you.
The other item, the inmate for health, mental health services, that should stay on the table. I've sent a copy to the sheriff. He's going to make some changes and send it back to me, so it should be ready to go by next meeting, fourth, I think it's the fourth if that were.
Thank you. Okay, approval minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. And I believe we have Mrs. Peggy Gunauda to make the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for listening to me today. I am here to represent the East Central Indiana Small Business Development Center, where I like to say we help businesses start, grow, and flourish. And in 2018, in Delaware County, we were helping and assist nine new businesses open, and we're very proud of that. In addition to that, we helped retain or increase jobs by 35. We helped with those new businesses or existing businesses receive $3,673,000 in investments. That would be through a bank, through personal, any kind of different way that they were able to invest in their businesses. So we were able to work with 110 total clients, and 36 of those, we worked with more than five hours, so we feel like those people were really the best at improving their businesses and listening to the help that we offer. We appreciate the support that the Delaware County Commissioners gave us in 2017. In 2018, I attempted to get on the agenda, and it was all my fault, and I got it messed up, so I didn't come ask for money in 2018. And in 2017, we were funded at the amount of $5,000, so I'm asking for $10,000 today to make up for the 2018 that I messed up on and for 2019. In addition to the services that I discussed, we also helped with lots of education. We did, we saw, I know I have it written here somewhere, we had 17 local training events where we helped with 457 training attendees. Those include anything from launch your own business, which is, I've got an idea, is really a business, a feasibility study, to learning about social media and how to use that for marketing your business. Are there any questions?
Peggy, we thank you for helping the people who want to do business, that's where the growth is, small business, and appreciate all your work, and I know that you work with Brett Bookout to help some of those clients also.
We certainly do.
At one time, we thought about her filling out one of those grants, I believe.
I think she did at one point, but it was kind of discussed that the Edit Grant was maybe for something more specific and not really related to this type of request.
What we set aside for was more for rehabilitation.
That's correct.
I just thought of saying community better, but.
I'd make a motion that we table it, have John look into that a little bit farther, and then we can make a decision in our February 3 meeting.
Take a look at the other plan. Thank you. Thank you for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll second your motion.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. I think it's February 4th.
It's 4th.
Yeah. Okay. Turning the page, second reading for an ordinance 2019-002. Being an ordinance to amend the text of the Delaware County Comprehensive Zoning Regarding Confined Feeding Operations and Concentrated Animal Feeding Operations. Marta Moody.
Marta Moody, Executive Director for the Delaware Muncie Metropolitan Plan Commission, and as just read by Ms. Reagan, this is regarding an amendment to the text of the Delaware County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance regarding the insertion of requirements dealing with confined feeding operations and confined animal feeding operations. The Plan Commission at their meeting earlier this month returned a favorable recommendation by eight to zero with one absent, and the ordinance is based upon work that was done by a committee. When I filed the ordinance with you, I also filed a copy of the PowerPoint setting forth the committee's report. I also filed with you a copy of a brief that was referenced at the Plan Commission meeting dealing with home rule, and that was authored by Kim Ferraro. The committee's work, well, after a lot of discussion, the committee's work is based upon a density issue, and we believed that we didn't want to prevent all operations from the county, but we did want to steer them toward areas that we considered more appropriate for these operations, and that got us into a discussion of what is rural and density. And so looking at some of the, looking at our county, taking away the population of the towns, and then the remaining population in acreage, ended up with like 81 people per acre. We cut that in half, and that's where we arrived at the breakdown of 16 or fewer homes being the most rural areas of the county, and 17 to 32 being the next level, and then anything over 33 we defined as rural residential. And those three categories carry different requirements that are set forth in the ordinance. And in the first two levels, the most rural areas, the ordinance sets that out as CFOs and CAFOs being permitted uses in those areas, subject to a site review to make sure that they meet all of the requirements that are set out in the ordinance, the setbacks and other requirements. The third area, the rural residential, those, the uses would be categorized as a special use in that area, meaning that they would have to go through a public hearing process with the Plan Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. The requirements in that area are a little bit higher than they are in the first two levels. There were, there was a lot of discussion about the IDIM requirements, and so I had Lori on my staff put together just a poster to show you, because some, in our discussion, some people have mentioned that, well, the IDIM requirements are fine. Basically, currently, we have nothing in the ordinance that sets forth additional requirements for these types of operations, and so that means that the IDIM requirements would prevail, and this poster shows you the, the orange area up there reflects the IDIM requirements, and the upper right reflects the lowest level of the requirements set forth in the ordinance, the Level 1 rural agricultural. Level 2 rural agricultural is in the lower left, and then the right is just a graphic representation of the Level 3. The other thing you have to remember is these are just trying to give you a feel for, there's IDIM, here's our requirements at the different levels, but it, this, the way we, the way these things work, and the density graphic that was in the report, doesn't mean that on any particular property, you can have it. It still has to be reviewed to make sure that, number one, it meets the appropriate level based on density, and then, number two, that it meets all of the setback requirements. The, the other thing that everyone agreed on and that the ordinance setbacks reflect is that we did not want lagoons, so that we put very extensive setbacks in there for lagoon-type manure management systems, to the extent that they would not be permitted. If they meet those setbacks, there's no place where they could go. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
I do want to thank the committee, and I believe Mark, Mr. Parker's here, and I don't know anybody else that's here.
Michael Elizabeth is, yeah.
And Ms. Fiskel back there. And I did sit in 80% of the meetings, but there were a few that I left, I had to leave early or didn't attend, and I thought I had heard that it was going to be a 400-foot setback from the roads, but I was reading this, it's only 200.
200 feet, right. There is a 400-foot setback from a property line.
And that brings up something else. I thought it was a property line, but someone said it's structure to structure.
No, that, what you're thinking is that's the setback requirement from a residence.
Right.
That is structure to structure. There is an additional setback from a property line on, on the site of a proposed operation that would be 400 feet from the property line to any of the onsite structures. So it's two different requirements, both would apply.
That's the way the committee remembers, I mean, I just don't remember hearing structure to structure.
That's the setback to, from the production area structures to a residence. That's structure to structure.
Well, I'm, okay, yeah, I'd like to. Here's somebody on the committee.
You caused that. I think I caused that confusion. I had noticed in, I'm Jenny Irving, and sat on the committee, and in over 20 ordinances of the state, everything is from the property line. It's, there's no mention of structure to structure. I think IDIM likes structure to structure, and my complaint with structure to structure has always been that I purchased that property, I pay taxes on that property, I am responsible for what happens on my property, and I don't feel like anybody else's business or agricultural industry should be able to encroach or pirate, I mean, it's basically squatting, upon my property to even use from structure to structure. So my thing has always been that I just don't like structure to structure, and I, I really feel like everything should be from a property line, and there is precedence for that in, as I said, other state ordinances, and I feel like it is appropriate for my property owner rights for everything to be from property line with no structure to structure measurements.
So.
And that was a discussion in our group. I don't feel like it, it was adequately clarified or.
Well, it's almost three and three, so Marta, did you, were you able to swing that vote, or I mean?
Yeah, it was almost three to three. We were very divided, yeah.
So when something like that came up, that's, that's one of the things I got the calls, the most emails and the most calls about, was the structure to structure. Other than that, I don't know what you gentlemen, if you, what, received any additional calls on anything.
Mine was on the property line and the structure to structure, special use on this. I mean, we, we have no ordinance in place now, we have nothing, and I know that they tried to put something in place since Donald, 2005.
Yes.
When you guys tried to put something in place then. I mean, you can send it back to committee, go through this again and not have anything. It could be passed today, and John, you could send it back then for amendments, if I'm correct.
What the, what the ability, since this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance itself falls under Section 606 of the zoning code, you have four different options, actually five different options. One is to adopt it, one is, another one is to reject it, third one is to amend it, fourth one is to table it and schedule it for another meeting at some later point, the other one is do nothing, and after 90 days, it becomes enacted as presented with a favorable recommendation from the zone, from the Planning Commission. Now, if you reject it or amend it, you have to send it back to the Plan Commission for their review, and you have to be specific in what your amendment or reasons for rejection were. They have to then consider that, then make another recommendation to the commissioners, which then you're back to this, where we are today. So those are, those are basically your options.
I want to make a motion to adopt it and release the moratorium.
Can we take public comments?
I think we've.
I'll second for.
We've heard public comment.
Not time for this, amendment.
Meet in two thirds.
Well, I have a motion.
I'll second it for.
Second.
I'd like to have a discussion with the commissioner.
That's what your motion was?
I made, I made a motion to adopt it.
I'll second it to have some further discussion here amongst the commissioners.
Okay. Roll call please.
Mr. King.
Whoa, 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 you have a motion and a second just to adopt it. The, the request of Commissioner King was to have discussion.
Right.
So you had, this is the time to have discussion, then you call the question.
Right.
For the approval, for the adoption. This is a second reading, so this will be the final action by the Board of Commissioners to, to adopt this.
Yeah. Well, I've, I've, I've had complaints on both ways on this.
I as well.
Some things, the setbacks are too much, some things, the setbacks aren't enough.
Correct.
To me, I would like to have something in place, but we can also go back from what I'm getting from our attorney, and go back and look at other options, maybe send it back to the committee to look at other areas on the setbacks. What worries me is we've, we've got to a certain place now to where we, we have an ordinance in front of us, everybody's been asking us for an ordinance or something to adopt on this. It went through a committee, I know some was three to three, maybe we should have put one extra person on the committee, but we didn't, or somebody didn't trump the vote on the two, so. But honestly, to me, we need something in place. We can always go back, we can always amend, we can adopt this today, we can send it back to the committee to further research setbacks and, and other areas. Sitting up here on this board, we can't make everybody happy. We try to come to a, you know.
Reach a middle road.
You know, I do believe we need something in place. We haven't had anything in, in place. Like John said, they tried to do this in 2005, I don't know why it wasn't put in place, but right now, there's.
Can we raise our hands and say if we want better ordinances than that, and just to show you how many people here are in support of something better and stronger? Everybody raise your hands if you want something better.
Can't just give up on doing your job. The other.
And I don't think we're giving up on doing our job, because if we gave up on doing our job, we wouldn't be sitting here today with the ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt.
I'll call the question.
Question. Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
No. Motion, yes.
That's it. That's the standing as of the.
It's been adopted.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Where was the motion for closure?
It wasn't a motion for closure. It's called a question.
I'd like to.
Ordinance for first reading.
Ordinance number 2019-003, Delaware County Commissioners' Ordinance for Juvenile Court Family Recovery Court.
I'll make a motion to introduce. I'll second.
Roll call.
Do you want to know something?
Yes.
Hi, Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. I emailed this to Mr. Brooke and to the three of you for you to review. Mr. Brooke, was this okay?
It was.
Okay. So this is for our family recovery court, our juvenile court. They got another grant, they already have a grant in place, and this is just another grant to go along with that. We don't have a fund established, so I just need that approval for the fund establishment.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Do you need this right of way?
No, we can wait till next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Went down to department heads, like officials, anybody wish to speak today? See, nine monthly reports turned in. Payments of claim, $1,405,34.
Eric, could you shut the door?
Nine cents.
I'll make a motion to pay claims.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Questions from the public? Three minutes to discuss anything.
Elizabeth Drusko, living Muncie, 100 West. I would like to ask that we send this back to committee, the CAFO ordinance, CFO ordinance, to consider special use, not a site-by-site review to make sure that they're meeting setbacks, but an actual special use that would go before the BZA, because that gives both parties, the applicant and the neighbors and the residents of the county, a fair process and expected process. They know what their rights are and who to complain to, and it's not just kind of helter-skelter, free-for-all, trying to figure it out, but everybody knows exactly what the due process is, and I think it's the most fair option for all parties involved. So I would ask that you consider that now this is adopted, that we could send it back for amendment like now, not in two years or whenever.
Thank you.
Linda Hanson, I'm here for the League of Women Voters, a spokesperson, 1400 West North, Muncie, Indiana. The ordinance that you've just passed to amend the text of the Delaware County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Regarding Confined Feeding Operations and Concentrated Animal Feeding Operations will not serve Delaware County residents well, and you've just heard from a good many of them. In its current form, the ordinance will be detrimental to meeting the first two goals of the Muncie Delaware County Five-Year Economic Plan outlined in Vision 2021, enriching quality of life and enhancing quality of place for all of us. The League's position is that all CAFOs and CFOs should be designated as special uses in the F-farming zone, subject to a special use permitting process. So we support what Elizabeth was saying. In the ordinance you've just passed, a special use permitting process similar to Hamilton County's will be applicable only in rural residential areas. Those areas defined as having 33 or more dwellings in a circular square mile area. In the two rural agriculture areas with fewer residences, 0 to 16 and 17 to 32 dwellings each, housing density and minimum setbacks alone will determine CAFO and CFO location guidelines. Publicly, both your body and the Delaware Muncie Metropolitan Planning Commission have recognized that all, not all CFOs and CAFOs are the same, and not all site conditions are the same, even given similar density locations. Accordingly, we urge you to designate all CAFOs and CFOs as special uses in the F-farming zone, subject to the special use permitting process through the Board of Zoning Appeals for public notice, hearing, unwritten findings. A special use designation would provide structural protections for both existing landowners and CAFO/CFO developers, and perhaps most important, transparency for the public, a crucial component. So we respectfully request that you extend the moratorium, another issue, until a new committee can develop amendments to meet those goals for the ordinance that you have just passed. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Anyone else?
Jennifer Irving, and I was on the committee. I agree with everything that Linda has said, and I will say that I feel like to send this back to the same committee, you probably will not get any changes. I feel like we had good presentations, there was a lot of information presented, and basically, you know, there are people who sat on the committee that will not change their minds to make this any stronger, so, and it needs to be stronger. I'm happy that you've adopted the ordinance just because we really need something, and I don't want to see this be thrown out and go on. However, it needs to be, I would like to see it sent back either to another committee or to have somebody in there who is neutral and kind of up to speed on the situation. I mean, Commissioner Reagan sat in on a lot of our meetings, and she saw how things were debated, and to me, you can't open a mind if it chooses to be closed, and that's basically, there are people who feel very strongly that IDIM is just fine, even though they have two inspectors for the whole state, that everything that has been written is just fine, and there are, this is the second year that in the House, at the state level, there's been a bill proposed to look over IDIM and to like change setbacks to a mile. I mean, it's a lot more than what it used to be. We are a lot more educated and a lot more aware of the possible long-term impacts of this kind of agricultural industry, and as a community, I feel like we need to be responsible and, you know, step forward to how we want our future to be. So once again, I am not opposed to going to, back to a committee in some way, I just would propose that it be a different committee or have another member, because quite honestly, you know, I feel like Marta did a very good job of overseeing our committee the best that she could. I think there were some things that she knew that she wanted in there, and they're in there, and maybe those are some things, you know, my old property line deal, but I, that's my, that's my comment, so, thank you.
I'd like to speak in regard to the CAFO setback, and I agree with what's been said here, I think it should be setback.
Sir, could you please give us.
My name is Dr. Donald Hendrickson.
Thank you.
And I'm president of HML. It's an environmental testing laboratory, and I. It's an environmental testing laboratory, and I've been involved with a lot of this kind of data in the past. And one of the things I would point out is there are no federal regulations that regulate CAFOs in regard to our health. And one of the big concerns has been the potential spread of pathogenic microorganisms. And recently, we've seen several recalls of food, major recalls, and I want to speak to that because one of those recalls, the one that involved the salmonella in the hamburger recently, I experienced that. Before the recall, I ended up with salmonellosis. So it's a very real situation, and most of these recalls have been centered around confined feeding operations near the area where some of these products have been produced. So then it becomes very important for our health that we consider this very carefully, and so therefore, I think the setback is not sufficient enough, and I think we need to set that back further for the health of the individuals that live around there. So we need to consider this very carefully until the federal government comes up with some regulations on it. Human wastes are regulated very closely, but that's because they're controlled by the US EPA. Feeding operations are controlled by USDA, which has no enforcement powers, and they have very little regulations. In fact, they have none. The only regulations that are present are to protect the farm ground, not the people. So I would think, I would like you to consider this very seriously and send it back for the health of everybody that lives in Delaware County. Thank you.
Madam President, I have some documents for you and the rest of the commissioners. May I approach?
Sure.
My name is Mitch Isaacs. I am the president of the Country Village Creekwood Neighborhood Association. As you know, our community pays nearly $100 a month for wastewater treatment. This is the largest wastewater bill in the county, and according to the Indiana Office of Utility Consumer Counselor, according to the most recent available data, the average rate for customers of municipal sewer utilities, including $5,000 gallons of water per month, reached $45.29 in 2015, not including water or stormwater charges. I have also included their 2017 analysis, which I just handed you for your review. You'll note that our current rate benchmarks us among the highest performed in their analysis. Mr. Brooke, who is your representative to this, to Delaware County Regional Wastewater District, told this body that Muncie Sanitary is charging a disproportionately high rate leading to our current charges. MSD disputes these claims. You may also be aware that in July of 2017, Muncie Sanitary proposed a solution that would consolidate the districts, resulting in a $75 a month rate for our community with the possibility of trash service. This is a significant discount for our community. The proposal was good through 2031. I've handed you copies for your review, and it actually came from the lawyer for Delaware County Regional Wastewater District. I was told by Delaware County Regional Wastewater District that one of the reasons they rejected this proposal is because moving to MSD would remove our local representation. The board decided to vote against this because if we went with Muncie Sanitary, we would be, we'd have a mayor who doesn't approve the board, thus leaving our neighborhood without representation. We've been told multiple times that local representation is a key benefit of staying Delaware regional customers because this body, the county commissioners, are our elected officials. As such, I am here today to ask for this body's help. I have spoken with the mayor and the director of the Muncie Sanitary District, and both have said they are willing to sit down with the commissioners and a representative from Delaware County Regional Wastewater District to resolve this issue. Are you willing to meet with them as our elected officials to help us resolve this issue?
Good point. John, can you fill us in? You've been doing some dealings with the city and...
Sure. The Delaware County Regional Wastewater District has entered into a near-level agreement with Liberty to build a combined plant. They did a cost analysis study, and that cost analysis study would show that the cost of the plant would actually save substantially less than what we're paying to the district. Delaware County's paid over $2 million a year to the district for treating about 1,500, maybe 1,600 homes. That's three, 200 to 300 times what York County and Delville are charging for the same Even when you account for the, if you account for the volume of wastewater that's going to Muncie as opposed to Delville and York County, it's still 217% higher. The proposal by the Muncie Sanitary District included a request from Delaware County Regional to amend the configuration of the wastewater district so that they would have representation from outside the city, which was rejected, to the best of our knowledge. And there's been no further discussion since then. Since then, actually, Muncie Sanitary District has been trying to expand its territory to swallow up the Delaware County Regional Wastewater District, which is pending in front of the IURC, and that's under advisement with the IURC at this point.
So I'm not lost for words because then...
If I could clarify, Madam President, I'm simply asking if one of the commissioners and representative from Delaware County Regional, as Mr. Brooke himself has told me multiple times, the benefit of staying Delaware regional customers is that you, our elected officials, represent us in here. So all I'm asking is, we already have the mayor and the sanitary district who said they'd be willing to sit down to discuss and come to terms of conclusion. Not to make too much light of this, but if the President of the United States and congressional Democrats can sit down...
Yep.
I would guess that, that you all could sit down as well.
I'll be home if you have a minute.
We, it's actually all of Hamilton Township, and I think, Mr. Brooke, you've said before, it's about what, 1,300, 1,400 ratepayers?
There's 1,400, a little over 1,400 ratepayers in the Horton area. There's 97 ratepayers in the DeSoto area. Mr. Isaacs represents a neighborhood association that represents about maybe 10%, 10 to 15% of the total ratepayers in that whole area. And I will tell you that Mr. Isaacs' position is not universal in the ratepayers in DeSoto.
I would imagine no one's position is universal.
Yeah.
So I'm just, again, I'm asking, I think it's a simple request.
Well...
Are you, are you willing to sit down and help us figure this out?
We want to improve the community, and anytime we can save money, we should do that. And John, I don't know if the city would want to sit down with your board or...
So Commissioner Reagan, the mayor told me personally, Nikki Griggs, we both said personally, that they would sit down with a commissioner, all the commissioners, I don't think it matters how many, and a representative from Delaware Regional, and come to the table. Delaware Regional, and I tape all of my visits to Delaware Regional, so I do have video evidence that helps, has said that Muncie Sanitary won't sit down with them. So here we sit, they were. I'm just asking you all, as our elected officials, to...
And I will go on record, and myself, not of, other two gentlemen, that I do not want to see Liberty and build a new plant. John, tell us about the first time that you were thinking about building a plant to compare now.
The first proposal that was, before I got on the board, the first proposal had an estimated cost of $45 million, and it was to create a plant up near Eaton. The board made the decision to review and revise and see if there was a possible savings. The, a new engineering firm was hired, and that was changed to about $17 million to build the plant, and a substantial savings for that.
Big difference.
Yep, and I would say that I have approached on behalf of our neighborhood and said that we have concerns about building that plant. The last time construction was done, we were left with two bonds, and so that's part of the reason why we pay such a high rate. So there are concerns about building. I would also add that my understanding is that Delaware Regional is right now suing the lawyer for Liberty Township, Mark April. He was their former lawyer, who has not been giving them documents. So they're negotiating with Liberty Regional, and they're negotiating with an organization who has legal representation that they're currently suing. So that is, that is true, Mr. Brooke.
It's true, but it has nothing to do with the discussions with Liberty Regional. We deal with the board, and we're having conversations with the board.
And per your direction, Mr. Brooke, you had told me multiple times that the benefit is to work with the county commissioners as our elected officials. So per your, your suggestion, sir, I'm here, once again, asking a very simple and direct question. Are you willing to sit down with Muncie Sanitary and the mayor and help us figure this out?
John, I have no problem sitting down, discussing anything with them. We might even, they'll find out who's paying for the Pacers and Colts tickets, too.
That's true. We might find that out for all the sponsorships. I'm happy to, I'll discuss it with the Regional Wastewater Board. I think we have a meeting on the second...
I have no problem going and sitting with them and having a discussion with them at all.
Thank you very much. So how, how would you like to, would you like to reach out? Did we reach out to the mayor? What's the next...
We'll have John as our attorney reach out.
When's your next meeting?
And see when they will be available to sit down and have a discussion.
Thank you for being willing to discuss. I appreciate it.
Well, actually, it's the sixth is our next wastewater meeting.
I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Okay. Anything else?
My name is Constance Ray. I live 1270 North, 225 West, and I have a visual to show you why we feel it's really important that you consider property lines. I also want to say that I attended the, the last Blackford County Planning Commission meeting, and all their area is, is special use, and we have very little special use. It really does not make much sense. Here's another thing that doesn't. This is the approximate distance for set asides from here to here that's allowed in the first and second levels. Many of us purchased land so that it could be used to subdivide because our county is a county that is, has bedroom communities on it. My husband and I left maps for all of you to see that a one-square-mile circumference does not represent the numbers of citizens that can live within a small area. Within our small area, there of, of approximately four miles or three-mile band, there are seven bedroom communities, and they will all be impacted by having a CAFO. This needs to be taken into consideration. That's why we need to have special use across the county. This is, this represents the 320 feet, feet distance that's there for the set aside from residents to the CAFO. This is the 400 feet that the owner of the CAFO land has to set aside. This is how much the owners of the land will lose the use of because of that. That is, as you can see, that's almost 70% of that setback that they, that the owners, the residents, have to bear responsibility for, meaning that the land that we purchased to be able to build on later on, that is, is frozen, taken away from us. The money that we could have garnered from building is taken away from us, and this is a very serious difference. You need to consider what the citizens of Delaware County will think of their elected officials if you do such a thing. Please, I ask you to consider setbacks from property line to property line, and I ask you to consider special use because we are a county of bedroom communities, and this, and currently, the one-square-mile does not adequately portray how the population is across our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm going to get up real quick, just because I've put a lot of effort into this, and it's Tonia Evans, 2250, West Kennedy Road, 1270 North. And I would just like to say that I'm highly disappointed. I mean, you all took an oath to protect our welfare, our health, and our convenience in this county, and instead, you just took away my property rights, my human rights, and my environmental rights. And I just think that it needs to be considered to go back to committee immediately for amendments.
Thank you.
Averyng, 12660, East Eaton, Albany Pike. I do have some additional info to add to this. It's a toothless, watered-down ordinance. I agree with the commenters so far, with an unbalanced committee. Setbacks aren't sufficient, and they won't protect property values. It won't protect the property tax revenues that will result, so we'll continue to lose population in rural areas. We don't have to accept, as a community, the least neighbor-friendly form of agriculture, despite what we may hear. There are other forms of agriculture. They're pasture-based, neighbor-friendly. They increase revenue per acreage, actually increase neighborhood property values, can lead to increased property tax revenue, which I know is a big concern for the commissioners trying to run a county. We have a Purdue Extension expert based right here in Delaware County that's a statewide organic agriculture coordinator who could be a huge benefit to this county, did we listen to him and use his expertise. We should continue the moratorium. We should put some teeth into an ordinance, take some pride in our community, and move forward into higher value agriculture. I would ask Commissioner Reagan to put forth a motion that would send this back to committee and keep the moratorium, whether or not it gets seconded or not, out of principle. Thank you.
I would like to make a motion that we consider the moratorium.
Under the Indiana Code 3674602, you can make amendments to the zoning ordinance, which is what this is, is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. The amendments can be made by the plan commission or petition signed by a property owner of at least 50% of the land involved, which would be, that'd be the whole county, so that's not really appropriate. But the legislative body can also initiate a proposal and prepare, require the plan commission to prepare it. So the commissioners could ask for an amendment if they want to send it to the plan commission and for the plan commission to consider that amendment if they want to do that. Those are, those are the ways that the procedural that it gets done. It just doesn't get done by a motion and a second and a vote. There has to be a proposal that's sent to the plan commission to, for the plan commission to consider it. So that, just want to give you the procedural requirements.
Thank you. Do that at our next meeting. You have a motion to...
Second.
Your...
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Meeting adjourned.